Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District 6 on Monday, August 25th. This meeting will now come to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, would you please call the roll?
Director Azari?
Present.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you. Well, our school year is off to a great start. I think we've all been attending some back-to-school events and getting our own kids into their classes and into their sports. I just wanted to share a story about meeting a District 6 graduate in the wild, so to say, or in my job as a nurse. I had this lovely CNA that worked with me. She was friendly, she was personable, she did excellent, performed excellent patient care, and we just got to chat the whole day. She is enrolled at CSU, she graduated from Greeley West High School in 2021, from the IB program, and she's graduating in three years and going to be a physician's assistant. And it was just fun to hear about her experience in District 6 and, you know, that wasn't the point of our relationship, but that came out. And so I'm not surprised. I am pleased to meet a person, a young person with so much future, so much to look forward to, and that she got a great start here in District 6. So... And that will bring us over to our superintendent's honor roll. We have a short and sweet meeting this evening, but it's all about students. So excited to hear who you're going to honor this evening.
Thank you, President Mash, and we have had the privilege of honoring this program in the past as well. I am excited to honor three Northridge High School students tonight: Maddie Adams, Avery Crawford, and Stacy Kader, along with our sponsor Joanna Fedor. This team of three won a national gold medal in Food Innovations at the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida this summer. The Food Innovations event recognizes participants who demonstrate knowledge of the basic concepts of food, food product development by creating an original prototype formula, testing the product through focus groups, and developing their own market strategy. Participants demonstrate their knowledge of food science, nutrition, food preparation, safety, and product marketing. Through this event, students learn creativity, there's my microphone, teamwork, responsibility, time management, decision-making, or problem-solving, and public speaking. And we are so proud of Maddie, Avery, and Stacy for their hard work and their dedication. And I'm so proud that they represent Northridge High School and District 6, and they did so at the national level. And so as you talked about, the student you met at work, who is a former District 6 graduate, and you think about her future, imagine the future these young ladies have here in District 6. I'm so proud. They've chosen District 6, and I'm so proud that they've dedicated their work in this way. I'd like to invite them up now. I think we have at least a couple of them here to speak. I'd like to invite them up to share a little bit about their project and their work, and then I also have a certificate for them. So come on up.
My name is Stacy Kader.
And I'm Maddie Adams.
And we are part of the Northridge High School Family Career and Community Leaders of America chapter. This summer, my teammates and I attended FCC LA Nationals in Orlando. For two of us, it was our very first time on an airplane, which made the experience even more memorable. We competed in Food Innovations where we created a low-sugar drink called Boba Bliss Mango Tango. We tested it with our peers, refined the recipe, and even designed original packaging with help from our engineering teacher. We were proud to bring home a gold medal at the national level. We want to sincerely thank the Success Foundation for the Delia and John Hayfleet Opportunity Fund grant, which helped make this trip possible. We are also very grateful for the support of our advisors, Ms. Engel and Ms. Fedor, Northridge High School, and the school district. Thank you for continuing to support opportunities like this that help students like us dream bigger and achieve more than we thought possible.
Thank you, ladies. Would you introduce your sponsors again and see if there's anything they would like to add, and then I will come join you?
This is Joanna Fedor and Carly Engel. Do you guys want to come and say something? No? Okay.
You guys just hear from moral support.
Yeah, right?
Right, okay. I think I have the right ones, right? And I have the third one. Do you want to take it, or should I give it to you, Joanna? Okay. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Who had never formed before?
Me and Avery.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, and then I'll give you the certificate.
Thank you so much for coming. I love that you wore your medals. You don't have that many opportunities to wear medals. Got to show them off. Our next item is to approve our agenda, which is an action item, requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Well, this evening, we did not have a work session, so we have moved our board member comments and reports over to the business meeting. So this evening, I'll start with Dr. Campos Spitsi. Let us know what she's been up to.
So, we have been staying out of schools and classrooms for the first few weeks. I think that's appreciated by our teachers and buildings to let them kind of get into their groove before we come in. But I do want to give a shout-out to Nutrition Services for our great school lunches. Both my kids and even my 16-year-old exchange student really enjoy them. My five-year-old said the strawberries are better than the ones growing in my garden, and the peaches are better than Palisade Peaches. So I don't know what you're putting in that fruit, but... I wanted to give another shout-out to our District 6 educators, Matt Cox, also known as MC Squared, and Gionni Reliford, also known as G-Reel, for their inspiring new track called "Story Unfolds." You can just Google it or YouTube it. It's a song that encourages listeners to rise up despite being faced with difficult circumstances and to reach out rather than to isolate in hard times. Such a great message for not just our students, but all listeners. I wanted to highlight that in yesterday's E-week, so as I've mentioned in other board meetings, our board receives a weekly newsletter from our superintendent. We received ours yesterday for the week, and it gave us a sneak peek into our DIBELS data. And our DIBELS, for those of you who are not in education like me, is an acronym that stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. So the highlight is that our kindergarteners through 3rd graders are at grade level in literacy, with our kinder and 2nd graders in the high 80th percentile, and our 1st graders in the 94th percentile. So just kudos to our elementary school teachers and our team that has made that possible. It's really great news to start the year off with. As for the other end of our K-12 education, our college readiness efforts, I was pleased earlier today to receive an email from the Greeley Central High School counselors that was sent to all 11th and 12th grade Wildcats, inviting them to UNC's College Fair on September 17th. So the students will have the opportunity to walk to UNC to participate in this event that will include a walking campus tour and even Spanish services if needed. So just shout-out for that. And speaking about college, just a reminder to students and family about UNC's Tuition Promise Program. It allows students to go to college tuition-free if their household income is $60,000 or less. And for students whose household income is less than $90,000, there is the Colorado Promise Program that offers a refundable tax credit to reimburse tuition and fees for the first two years of college. So I've been doing the math on this, and the Colorado Promise Program, which is the two years of free college for any university in the state of Colorado, it doesn't, they don't count concurrent enrollment before kids start. So if you have a high school student who wants to go to college and you are a household who makes $90,000 or less, you can really help your kid get their first two years of college done in District 6 through concurrent enrollment, and then have the next two years free with this refundable tax credit. So shout-out for post-secondary education. Lastly, last board meeting, we had public participation from Don Pearl. He spoke about Initiative 22, which would have allowed for public dollars to be funneled to private schools. There were not enough signatures collected for this petition, and so it will actually not be on the ballot this fall. So a celebration there. And while we haven't been in schools for the last couple of weeks, I did get to go to a really cool event on Friday night. It was held at the Link Library, and they presented this book, "Our History, Our Voice." It's for the Mexican-American History Project of Greeley, and it's 44 different Greeley historians are documented here. They are documenting the contributions of Mexican-Americans to the city of Greeley. I'm really excited to read it. I didn't get to it over the weekend, and also excited to have our students have access to this. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Norwood?
Well, I've been busy trying to get a business going or dodging around the rain and the hot weather, but in the meantime, I'm readjusting to mountain time, spend a little time on the East Coast. Did get a chance to take in a few baseball games, which I love to do, especially this time of the year. And when I got back, I shook the cobwebs off and went over and watched a little UNC soccer and saw one of my former students play. She plays over at UNC. So that's about it.
Mr. Azari?
Thank you, President Mash. I will report to the board and the community tonight on the recent meeting that we had last Thursday, August 21st, with the Colorado Association of School Board, the Region 4 Regional Meeting. I attended that event along with Vice President Bentley, Dr. Pilch, and our Board Secretary, Amy Lemon. The meeting was held at Toynton STEM Academy and was attended by many superintendents and school board members from across our area, including from Windsor, Loveland, Fort Collins, Johnstown, and many rural districts, just to name a few. I'd like to thank Toynton's principal, Justin Ungahower, and the school staff for making Toynton such a welcoming place for the meeting. The school was a shining example of the excellence that can be found throughout our school district. In fact, our school district and its programs and outreach to the community were of interest to the attendees and served as positive examples for other districts. Among the many topics of discussion at the meeting included school funding and accountability, teacher recruitment and retention, and how school districts build trust in their communities. Again, District 6 was a focus of a lot of that discussion. Much discussion centered around an explanation of our current statewide system of assessing student achievement, how the accountability system was developed over the years, current measures of student learning, and how statewide test data is analyzed and used to evaluate school districts and schools throughout the state. Dr. Pilch's insights and her broad spectrum of knowledge and understanding helped in clarifying and focusing the discussion concerning all of those topics. She was a central leader in that discussion. The group was interested in many of our programs found in this school district, including the development of K-8 schools, magnet programs, our CTE programs, and our publicized materials and outreach that our communications folks put out to the community. Dr. Pilch also clearly presented information regarding all of those programs as well. And that is my synopsis of that meeting. Vice President Bentley might have some other insights. That's all I have. President Mash?
Thank you for attending and for such a thorough report. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, President Mash. As Dr. Campos Spitsy said, we haven't been able to get into classrooms just yet. We're excited to do that, and and I am sure the teachers and principals appreciate not having us disrupting things in the first few weeks. I have gotten to see quite a few athletic events. Though one this last Friday was a citywide tennis tournament, and it was at Centennial, I think Greeley Central, Greeley West, Northridge University, all played. It was a fantastic event. And in the different things that I've gotten to see, golf tournaments and tennis tournaments, and back-to-school night, I'm sorry I could not make the CASB event. It was at back-to-school night for Greeley Central. But I have gotten to talk to quite a few high school teachers, and this is early and anecdotal, but this is what I continue to hear, is that this year feels different. It feels different in their freshman class, different than the last few years, that the behaviors seem better, that there's just a difference in the group. And I asked Principal Green, as I was walking in, if he could say if that was, if he was seeing the same thing. He said, yes, that is what we're seeing. And so it does appear, maybe, and again, it's early and anecdotal, but it does appear that maybe, you know, COVID really is in our rearview mirror. And we are starting to see some of the good fruit. And so I think it's an opportune time just to remind everyone that in, it was just five years ago, but but in the fall of 2020, when most large school districts stayed shut down, that our teachers and our food service, our nutrition specialists, our bus drivers, our custodial staff, our administrators, our office staff, we all said, we're going back. And I've never been more proud than to be associated with anyone at any point in my life, as I was in that moment, to be associated with our teachers. And because when we said we need to go back, the people that actually were in the classroom or on the bus, they never batted an eye. And they said, yes, we need to go back. And again, when most, every large school district in the state was staying closed, our staff made the sacrifice to serve students. And I think it's because of that that we are seeing, you know, some of the results that we're seeing now, and some of the things that we, some of the good fruit and the behaviors that we're starting to see. And so, again, very excited for this school year, very excited to think that that might be in our rearview mirror. Thank you, President Mash.
Vice President Bentley? Vice President Bentley?
Yeah, thank you guys for all that. There's not much I could add to Doran's report outside of just some common themes I see when we're at these kind of meetings, CASB Region 4. I think we were the biggest or the second biggest one in the room as far as student population and I'm on the BOSI's board. But there's always a common theme that we're really lucky to be in District 6. Just to see some of the stuff that other districts and teachers and administrators are dealing with really makes you kind of sit back and realize the stuff we take for granted. Some of it's the economy of scale where we're afforded that luxury. But the majority of it is just our great administration and staff and the people running the district. So as I go to those meetings and just kind of take it all in, it really makes me proud to be part of D6. So I don't have much else to add except just ready for Friday Night Lights. So good luck to everybody this season.
Thank you. I also have just attended events, I guess, as a parent. I am the representative for Greeley Central, got to go to Back to School Night both as a parent and as the board representative. But it's always great to see just the pride, the excitement, everyone coming back in their colors and being excited to see their friends and their teachers. I also thought I would take the opportunity, we already shouted out the Nutrition Services Program. But for those of you who don't know, we have a wellness program through Greeley-Evan School District 6. It's both for students and for staff. And we get a report every year. They set up their goals and similar to our Innovation 2030 Plan. So it's great for us to see all the different ways that we are serving our students. You know, our mission as a district is a well-rounded education and I think that includes physical and mental health and nutrition as well for our students and our staff. So I'm sure that there's access to this on the website. But if you have any questions, we have a robust wellness program here at District 6 as well. Our next item on our agenda is to receive an update on... Oh, just kidding, superintendent's report. Sorry, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, President Mash. I'm going to start with introducing some of our new administrators who are in the room tonight. So you all can put a name to a face and the role that these folks are serving in. I first want to introduce to you David Bolish, who is our new Dean of Students at Jefferson High School. Dave, will you stand up and give everybody a wave? We welcome Dave here. We actually stole him away from Zero Dropouts, who you all know is a big partner of District 6. And he was the program administrator at the next program and they were very disappointed to see him leave. But he wanted to get back into public education, working in public education where he has worked previously. He comes to us as a former high school teacher and head coach and assistant athletic director. And he also has some business outside of teaching as a business manager and supervisor. So he brings a lot of experience and we're really proud to welcome him to District 6. Welcome, David. And then I want to introduce Erin Terman, Interim Assistant Principal at Franklin Middle School. I got to start my day today at Franklin, so I got to see Erin and her principal Suzette twice today. But we're really excited to have Erin in this role. We had a late resignation with our former assistant principal who decided to stay home with her new baby. But Erin comes to us having been an eighth grade language arts teacher at Franklin Middle School. And prior to that, she was a middle school intervention teacher in New Mexico and a department head at an alternative high school in New Mexico. Welcome, Erin. We're glad to have you and thanks for stepping up. And then I want to introduce to you Brian Deveraux. And Brian doesn't feel like a new face to us. Brian has been in District 6 for a while now, I think his whole career. He started with us as an English teacher and then an instructional coach and a PE teacher as well, all at Jefferson High School. And then finished as Dean of Students at Jefferson High School. And Brian will be serving as the Assistant Principal Athletic Director at Greeley Central High School. So he's taking on a big, big responsibility there and we're proud to welcome him to Greeley Central High School. Thanks, Brian. And then I want to introduce to you Victoria Baker, who is our new Assistant Principal at Madison Steam Academy. Again, another internal hire, which I'm so proud to be able to hire within. Victoria was most recently our lead kindergarten teacher at Madison Steam Academy. And prior to that, she was a first grade teacher at Centennial Elementary. Welcome, Victoria, and we're thrilled to have you in the position. And then finally, I want to introduce to you Lisa Hudson. And Lisa is our new Business and Community Partnerships Administrator. And she's been on staff here for several weeks and we're going to put her to the test tonight with her first board presentation. So she's meeting you for the first time and she's going to help present tonight. We are so excited to have Lisa. She comes to us from the University of Northern Colorado Small Business Development Center, where she served as an Associate Director, an Executive Director, and really, really built up that program there and comes to us with extensive business and community partnership relationships. Lisa also serves on the Chamber Board of Directors, the United Way Board of Directors. So she brings a wealth of experience from the business world into this role and she seems to be adapting well to education. So welcome, Lisa, and we'll see you at the podium in just a few minutes. And then I'll just real quickly, I want to give you a little update on the start of school because we met, I think we met the last time on the very first day of school. And so we are in Week 3 of our new school year. And President Math... Excuse me, Mr. Matthews, old habits die hard. Mr. Matthews, I would agree with your comments about it does feel different. It was certainly a very smooth start to school. Students are very engaged and teachers are very engaged. And I'm hoping like you that COVID is in the rearview. And the data we're seeing from this spring's testing data is certainly an indicator that things are back on the right track here in District 6. I'm also pleased about our enrollment. We are still enrolling new students, but we have especially seen an increase in enrollment in kindergarten students. And just today, I approved to another hire of another kindergarten teacher. So I think we've hired five since school started. Mandy's nodding her head, yes, something like that. So our kindergarten numbers have come in much higher than we anticipated, which is really good. We are out of space now, though, to add additional teachers, I think. We've taken up about every extra classroom we have and in some cases are being really creative to figure out the space issues. But I've often said to you, when our numbers come in higher than predicted, that is a good problem to have when many of our neighbors, many who were at the CASB meeting last week, spoke about the woes of declining enrollment. And so we are so fortunate to not be in that boat and to see students still coming. We're over 22,300 students in the district and I don't believe that number includes preschool students. So we are happy to be growing and we are still enrolling students. So I want to welcome everybody back. I want to thank our staff, all of our educators for all the work they've done for such a smooth school start from custodial to grounds to transportation, to our health services teams, to our clerical teams, and of course, to our teachers and administrators. It's been, you know, it just continues to be truly an honor to serve here and to yet welcome another group of students into District 6. So welcome back, everybody. Thank you, President Mash.
Thank you very much. Now we will have our Innovation 2030 Strategic Plan Updates, Student Learning and Achievement, CTE and Work-Based Learning.
Good evening, President Mash, members of the school board and Dr. Pilch. I'm Jenny Schelling, the Director of Career and Technical Education. I am joined this evening by Jordan Carlberg, our Career Pathway Specialist, and Lisa Hudson, our Business and Community Partnership Administrator. We are pleased to provide an update on our work within career pathways. Before we begin, we would like to express our sincere appreciation to our community for the passage of the Mill Levee override, which has supported and advanced much of the career pathway work that we'll discuss this evening. The career pathway work is aligned to the District 6 mission and vision of engaging students in a well-rounded and excellent education, preparing them to be college and career-ready and lives in our student learning and achievement focus area of our strategic plan. Under the first goal, which is to provide a personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are career and college-ready with the objective to increase student participation in career pathways and meet industry and community needs. Our outcomes are to provide career pathway exposure and awareness across all grade levels and to actively engage with industry and post-secondary partners to expand work-based learning opportunities, concurrent enrollment, and career pathways that align with current and future workforce needs. Career pathway awareness is introduced at the elementary level through Smart Lab experiences, exploration activities, and the use of Zello. In middle school, students continue this journey with expanded exploration opportunities, discovery lab and Smart Lab, and more in-depth use of Zello to begin identifying interest and potential careers. At the high school level, students engage in career and technical education pathways, participate in skills events, continue using Zello for planning, and gain real-world experience through work-based learning opportunities. In District 6, we provide programming in 14 academies and 28 pathways across our high schools. All of our CTE teachers also have industry experience in the pathway they teach and many of them are endorsed to teach college classes within their program. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jordan Carlberg, who will share more about the specific programs and student opportunities within our career pathway work.
Thank you and good evening. Enrollment in those 28 pathways have steadily increased with last year having approximately 58% of our high school students enrolled in at least one career and technical education course. Additionally, enrollment at the District 6 Career and Technical Education Center has increased every year since its opening in 2324 school year with welding, construction, electrical, cosmetology at capacity, and teacher prep and IT cybersecurity still growing. The pathways at the CTE Center are two-year programs where students spend half their day at the CTE Center. Due to this extended time, students earn a total of four high school credits per year, two of which are CT electives and two are aligned with appropriate core credits that have been crosswalked to each pathway. Additionally, all the instructors at the CTE Center have both secondary and post-secondary endorsements, providing students the opportunity to earn educational and industry certificates through college courses that are offered within each of the pathways. Also, District 6 provides high school students with the opportunity to participate in concurrent enrollment through our post-secondary partners listed here. Students are able to get an early start on their post-secondary plans for earning college credit while in high school. Here's some of our preliminary concurrent enrollment numbers for the school year as there are usually some student schedule changes happening within the first few weeks. Currently, there's approximately 1,152 high school students enrolled in a college course this school year with the highest enrollment in college algebra and trig and the second highest in English composition offered through both UNC and Ames Community College. Both of these courses are taught on a... Most of these courses are taught on a District 6 campus by D6 instructors that have been endorsed by our post-secondary partners. And I'll hand it back over to Ms. Schelling.
Over the past few years, our work-based learning program has evolved into a vital component of our students' educational experience. It offers meaningful, real-world work opportunities that help students build professional habits, develop practical skills, and explore potential career paths through internships, apprenticeships, job shadowing, and similar experiences. This work is rooted in Colorado's work-based learning continuum with a strong emphasis on learning through work and learning at work, effectively bridging the gap between classroom learning and future employment, as will be shared by Lisa Hudson.
Good evening. Well, I'm really excited to be here tonight. It is a true pleasure. Thank you for having me. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the D6 internships and how we turned out in 2025. The program consists of 150 hours across a 10-week period in the summer and it's designed for current juniors. We encourage and have it as a minimum wage, which has been really helpful to our students across the district. The idea is to have students have the opportunity to gain work experience and lifelong skills, which were demonstrated in a lot of our results from our survey from the students and from our hosts. During this last summer, we had 179 paid internships for the summer 2025 and 45 employers in Northern Colorado. We had them in all different types of industries and we're really excited to expand that even further in 2026. Here's some data from the surveys that we collected so far. 69% said this was their first job experience for students. 100% feel better prepared to enter the workforce after this experience, up from last year at 89%. 100% agreed internships provided a meaningful learning experience. 88% have a better understanding of their career goals and 100% would recommend internships to other students. See, those are some pretty good figures. These are some quotes that we collected from the surveys, both from the students and from the hosts. The first one is from someone who learned how to read a site plan, municipal building codes, research buildings, and learn more about Greeley's municipal code. The second I found really touching about learning how to create lesson plans and adapting lessons to children on the spectrum with different needs, adjusting to learning speeds as well as to work the register and communicate with customers. On the host side, the second quote there, really neat. They also included in their quote that they had hosted over 96 interns over their time with the district and with university. And he said that the individual that he worked with was more skilled and job-ready than most. So it's a true testament to the students that we have here at District 6 and how they're representing us out in the community. We have a video here to showcase our students during the last summer. We have three successes here to present to you.
As we continue to advance our work within career and technical education, our focus remains on supporting students from an early age by building awareness and encouraging exploration of opportunities aligned to their future goals. We are committed to recruiting and retaining high-quality CTE educators, expanding pathways that ensure students are both career and college-ready, and strengthening our partnerships with industry leaders to enhance work-based learning experiences and enrich our career and technical education advisory boards. Thank you for providing us this opportunity to share our update and we would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Welcome, Ms. Hudson, to District 6. Our first question comes from Mr. Azari.
Thank you, President Mash. Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you for your work on behalf of our students in getting them out there into the community and thanks to all the business leaders and the other government agencies that provide a place for our students to learn. The question I have, as I looked at our young person who was involved with the fire department, the rescue services, when students intern in those types of fields, do they actually participate in the real-world work that could put them in some sort of safety jeopardy? I'm just wondering. I'm just wondering about that.
They do actually get to participate in the real world. They go on, I think it was a 24-hour cycle of when they're there and they stay at the fire station and they work right alongside of them and experience exactly what it looks like to be a firefighter.
Okay, well, then I have a follow-up question to that. And it doesn't have to do with safety. It has to do with just what happens after these field-- literally, in that case, field experiences. Do we track in some way, shape, or form? And I think I ask this all the time, don't I? I mean, it's just constant. I always ask this. Do we track what happens after graduation? For instance, a young person who is involved with fire and rescue, do they end up working in that field? Do they have a better opportunity maybe of landing a position with the Fire Department, those services, and other students that are involved in these sorts of activities? That's the question.
So we do not track them into specific industries. We do provide them the opportunity to create a career path plan that helps them accomplish what they're hoping to achieve. So with the individual that did the firefighting position, we would help connect him with concurrent enrollment in the fire-- in the Career Academy at Ames Community College. With a student who might be interested in nursing, we would help connect them with a Certified Nursing Assistant Program and help them get their foot in the door. A big part of this is also about networking. And so, yeah, I would think that that might give them a foot in the door.
Mr. Ozari, we do not have a mechanism, once students leave us, to really, to follow their employment or their career path. There's no mechanism for that within our system or within the state of Colorado. We do have email addresses and we maintain those for a year after graduation, but rarely do students respond to us and let us know what they're actually doing. What we are able to track, as Mrs. Schilling indicated, is who and how many credentials students are earning. So we do know who and how many fire safety credentials are being earned while students are still in high school. And we often know who is accepted into a fire safety program, say, at Ames Community College. But I know it's frustrating. I mean, I'm frustrated by it too. It's very difficult to track post-secondary information on the graduates for all of us in the state of Colorado. And maybe that's something we should push on our legislators to figure out a way to do that statewide.
I would also add that we do ask a question in the satisfaction survey to the hosts if they've offered the students a position after the internship. So we do get some responses there. As well as, it does open some doors for other opportunities, whether it's a job or an additional internship that they can go through. Banner Health offers a program called HEAL, which is an additional internship. So if we have students who have already gone through the D6 internship, they do have, I think, a leg up when they put in their application for the HEAL program.
Dr. Campos Spitsy?
I have two questions. One, I don't think I've seen the Zello pop up before. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so Zello is our, really our ICAP work for our students. It's a K-12 platform. And we went away from, we had a platform called Naviance in the past, and we've gone away from that. It wasn't very user-friendly. And Zello is really designed to help students start creating their personalized learning plan all the way at the K-2 level. It's very gamified, Career Town. And then they start doing aptitude tests. And the goal is that it really follows the students' K all the way through 12. There's a profile feature where students can upload their, like exemplars of their work, and that also stays with their account throughout their time with District Six. We're also exploring some ways on uploading-- the students can upload industry certs, so that way, again, it tracks with that student all the way through, as well as ways for them to develop resumes. And then there's also a financial literacy piece part of Zello that's rolling out in the spring. So Zello is really all-encompassing, K-12, ICAP, personalized learning plan.
And then my second question about the pathways. So happy to hear that the majority of students, 58%, are now in one of our 14 academy pathways. I'm curious, which is the most popular?
Yeah, our most popular is Business and Marketing. It's offered in all of our schools, Jefferson High School, and then all three of our comprehensives. And so there's a lot of opportunity for students to connect with our Business and Marketing.
Vice President Bentley?
I'm a little disappointed you didn't say welding, but I'm not surprised. I just wanted to comment more as, from my point of view as an employer. I did participate and I have participated. But I got an email update from my COO. I get weekly updates from him. And unbeknownst to him, that this program exists. He just knows that he's an intern. But he specifically put in his report to me that-- one of the interns, that's what he called him, but he called my name-- can I share their name? Is that appropriate? Julie Hill's son is in our program, Wyatt. And he specifically named Wyatt as the top performer in that line that he's working. So with guys that have 20, 30 years' experience, you know, Wyatt during the summer outpaced and outperformed, you know, even industry professionals. So from an employer's point of view, you know, cheap labor, a lot of value, and a really productive summer for us, you know. And Wyatt will probably get a job offer if he hasn't already. I'm not sure where they're at with that. I didn't keep track. But he probably is going to end up somewhere better than my company. But it has been very successful and we've been fortunate to have interns. The industry, as far as my industry, has been very hard lately to get applicants on board. I think this summer, we're running roughly one out of 10, maybe one out of five people that we offer a job to actually get hired just because of different reasons, mostly failed drug analysis tests. But that's kind of the environment we live in. So we definitely need more tradesmen.
Vice President Bentley, I might ease your worries over welding not being the top career pathway. So much of enrollment in the career pathways is driven by capacity. And so we keep our welding programs at a lower capacity, as does Ames. And so we have wait lists at Greeley West, at the Current Tech Ed Center for welding, and Ames has a wait list for the welding programs. Often is the case with the more technical careers, the business pathway does have a greater variety of courses that students can access. And we don't have to keep quite the class size load down in a business pathway like we do in a lab class, like electrician or construction or welding, where kids are using, you know, power equipment and there's some requirements around actually capping the class size. But lots of interest in all of our skilled traits, too.
Mr. Norwood?
I just had a question comment from Ms. Schilling. Did you say 45 employers participated in the internship program?
That's correct, yes.
In future years, planning on expanding on that at all? Or as many as you can get, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So I just had one final question. Because I come from a radio and television background, do you have any areas where people might want to get into broadcasting? I still have a lot of contacts. A good buddy of mine does the voice of the Rockies.
I'll jump in and then I'll let Lisa finish. But we do have students interested in audio broadcasting. We do have Ames Career Academy. We've got a handful of students every year that apply to the Ames Career Academy audio production that get in. And so, yes, we do have a handful of students. And then let Lisa wrap it up.
The answer is yes to any contacts. We're looking to grow this program. I have been hitting the streets and making contacts. We've got a leads list already of over 50 that we'll be connecting with to grow this program. So we're really excited to hopefully create more placements for our students.
What a great opportunity for students, I just have to say. Thank you to all of you for working so hard and doing this. And feel free to reach out because I still have a lot of contacts in the radio industry. So please, if you want contacts, please reach out. I'll try to help.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I think it's always a favorite. We enjoy hearing what our students did over the summer. I appreciate Mr. Bentley's perspective as a business owner. As a parent, both my children have been privileged to have an internship, and it's been extremely beneficial to both of them. So thank you. We're excited to see where the program grows. And again, welcome. Thank you all for being here. I believe we do not have any public participation this evening. So that brings us on to our consent agenda, which is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School, District Six, approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second?
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
All right. And that is all the business we have for this evening. So thank you all for being with us. Welcome back to school, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. This meeting is adjourned.